I'll call the July 19, 2021 county council meeting to order at this time. Brandon Guffey, the Honorable Brandon Guffey from District Six will lead us in invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Dear Lord, I want to pray that you watch over us this evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here safely and do the people's work. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we do not have any oath of office that I'm aware of. And at this time, I'll recognize Brandon Guffey, who will recognize Legion Collegiate Academy softball and baseball teams on winning their two-way state championships.
Yeah, it looks like we got a lot of people in the crowd from Legion. But first of all, I wanted to say congratulations. It's awesome. Winning a state championship is one of the few things that people can actually say that they've been able to do throughout their high school career. And thank you guys for all the hard work. But, you know, on the softball team, state two-way champions survived four elimination games undefeated in region games, defeated region teams by eight and a half run margin, lost one tournament game, then won the upper state, beat Chesney for the upper state crown, beat Andrew Jackson for the fifth time to win state title. Seven members of the varsity team were All-Area Team. Taylor Watson voted Player of the Year. Morgan Langley named second-team All-Region by the National Fast Pitch Coaches Association. Team had five players in the state rankings for all levels in the top 10. And the most important thing I see on there is all 15 members of the varsity team were All-American suited athletes. So that's just on the softball level. Thank you guys, or thank you girls, sorry. And great job. And then on the, the boys' baseball team, we had, and I apologize if I mess up the names at all, but Jack Kilalea, Colin Crapia, Ethan Belk, Joey Holinsky, Xavier Pelzer, All-Region. So thank you and congratulations.
I know the council thinks that what you've done is excellent. If y'all would just stand just so that we know who you are and we know who's being recognized, I know that we would love to give you a round of applause. If anyone would like to come forward and say a few words, you're certainly welcome to. Otherwise, you know, we congratulate you on your success.
Hey, everybody. I'm Straight Heron. I'm an athlete, director, head football coach at Legion. And I just want to say thanks for having us here. We're the new kid on the block in town and, and we've been through a lot of, had a lot of challenges, a lot of things going on. And to get through the end of the year and have these young ladies, these young men win state championships, it kind of topped off a place, a good place to be and a good place to start for the, for the next year. So we've got our new facility, new, the high schools out there built, and it's, it's, it's an exciting time for education and a different model of education for this area and for the right kids, kids that want to be doing something a little different. So thank y'all for having us. The recognition is really special to us. Anytime that we can say something good about our young people, we need to do it. So thank you very much. Dr. Kennedy is our principal. I don't know if he wants to say anything or not. Yeah, our softball coach forced me to come. Which Coach Heron said it all. Again, I want to thank the council for acknowledging our students, our student athletes. And I want to thank the students for doing such a great job and representing York County. So appreciate everything you do for us. And Austin, Coach Cook, could you please come up? And Coach Larry's in Florida with his, his young family and on vacation. So Coach Kirk, great job.
Thank you for having us here tonight. It's a bad turnout for us. The last time we had everybody there, but you, you touched on the fact that academic All-American is very important. It's very important to me. At Winthrop, it was very important. But when you win the state championship and you, you put your name up in that big highlight thing, and then I turn around, the next, within three or four days, we're academic All-Americans. I'm proud of that. These are our future leaders and future young ladies that are going to take us into the future, and they'll be well-prepared after academics that they're getting at Legion. We've had almost every player that's had the opportunity to sign a scholarship or is committed, and we intend to keep that up. The grades and the academics go hand in hand along with athletics. So thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Jalen Benjamin. I'm an assistant coach at Legion Collegiate. Devin Lowery's out of town. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you again, and congratulations to coaches and to the players. You're more than welcome to come forward. Do you want to take a picture right quick? All right. We probably need to stand up or our heads are going to be chopped off.
Congratulations. Great job, y'all.
Great work.
Now we'll hear from Kimberly Gaffney to address council regarding the history of William Mason Chisholm.
Thank y'all for letting me be here today. I'm not sure if y'all have the PowerPoint presentation. Yep, there we go. Okay. I wasn't sure if y'all wanted to see that. It's a pretty long presentation, but I'm going to try and paraphrase as much as I can. First of all, my name is Kimberly Gaffney. I'm a citizen of Rock Hill, South Carolina. I am the owner of Kimberly Gaffney and Associates Realty, and I've been a licensed real estate agent for over 14 years. I wanted to speak to you today regarding discovery that I and my son Daniel Gaffney, who is also a Realtor, found during a walk on some land that I was going to be listing on Saluda Street. This was back in February of this year. I have sent Councilman Rodman the PowerPoint presentation with some notes and a chain of events that have taken place since our findings. And even if you don't have time to read it now, I hope y'all will go through because I've done some extensive research on what I'm going to talk about right quick. During the walk on this property, we found what is called by the funeral homes, a tablet or a tomb on this property. In the PowerPoint presentation, I do have a copy of it here just to save time. This is what we sang on the property, if y'all can see that. And I didn't know what it was, so my son tramped through the woods and everything and went over to try and see what it was. And we had been looking for a pond on the property. Instead, this is what we found. We didn't know what it was until we got right in front of it, walked around to the front. And when we got to the front of it, we seen that it had a tombstone on the top of it that had a man's name and a year that he was born and a year that he died. No, no actual dates. If y'all can see this headstone. So of course, in all the years that I've been in real estate, I've never seen anything like this. Since that day in February, Daniel and I both have been on a mission to find out what we needed to do as Realtors because we do hold an ethics to do the right thing. And so we started looking for ways of what we needed to do, what we should do next, and then how to accomplish this. And this has been going on for quite a while. I have made many attempts with various government agencies to seek assistance with this situation. I have spoken with the local Board of Realtors, the South Carolina Association of Realtors, our local legal advocate in Columbia by the name of Byron King, Frankie Green with Green's Funeral Home, the York County Coroner Office, South Carolina DHEC, and an archaeologist here in South Carolina. These are all noted in my presentation that you guys were looking at. After all the dead ends that I've hit asking for assistance from all of these people, I finally resorted to the news media. It's not in the report here. I actually reached out to Channel Two first, and they never would call me back. So I finally reached out to Greg Suston with Channel Nine, and he jumped right on this story. Once this story was aired, my, my thing was to find the family of Mr. Chisholm. I was born and raised here. I know Chisholm is a very well-known name. And so I told my seller that we need to find the family of this person. And that's what this search has been about. I found that Mr. Chisholm was a writer.
You can advance the slide.
Oh, I ain't never done this, y'all. Oh, where did you mash?
So this will take it forward and this will take it back.
Oh, good. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. That might help. I ain't going to read all this to y'all. I'm just going to, I'll tell you, it's a lot. Okay, so time to get the media involved. Mr. Chisholm was known to be a writer. He has a book that he was, that he'd written. He was a musician. He built a school here in Rock Hill. He purchased school buses with money out of his own pocket. He paid for city water lines to be made available on Crawford Road, and the list just goes on and on. There is family here tonight that has signed up to also speak before the council meeting ends, and they're going to tell you some things about Mr. Chisholm. Right now, there's, there's a picture of the mansion. I was told that this mansion existed, but I have not seen it. I went to the property and I walked the property. And what I brought with me is to show you that there was a house there. It's white brick, and there's a white building. And there are a lot of piles of these bricks on the property. So I'm thinking this is, might be a historical area. I didn't know, but I thought somebody should know about it. Also, while I was there, a friend of mine and I, we just went on excursion. We found, this is a era of, I think I got a picture of it on here. This is an actual amber-colored Clorox bottle that was made back in like the 1920s or 30s. They don't make these anymore. And it's very clear that it says Clorox. And we also found a fully intact square milk jug with Superior Dairies on this, on the front of it. These are all artifacts that I found on the land there. So with all of this information, I reached out to city, to the city officials. There's some pictures there of some of, that's the easement, that's Chisholm Street that doesn't exist anymore. Let's see, what else we've got? There's some other things that we found. The Clorox bottle, 1918 to 1928. Where did the bottle come from? Somebody had to live there. There's the Superior Dairy. I researched that. Superior Dairy was located at 1020 Saluda Street on the corner of Bog Street, and it was owned by Rudolph Persley, possibly part of the Persley Dairy. I'm not sure. I didn't get to research it that far. But back to the, what we got at hand, I also found out there was a pond somewhere. That's how I found the tomb. I was trying to find the pond that I was told, and the GIS shows there's a pond on this land that I have listed. So I found the pond. It was also stated, a lot of people have come forward and said that Mr. Chisholm, actually, this was a man-made pond that he stocked for people to go fishing so they would have food to eat. There's also other things that has happened. Andrew Dice, if y'all remember him from the Herald, he did a story on Mr. Chisholm back in 2014. And Mr. Chisholm actually purchased school buses with money out of his own pocket. And they said he even drove the school buses to pick up black children during segregation to take them to school. If they didn't get to school, they would not have had an education. There's the copy of the book that he wrote in 1953, Splinter Darkness, William Mason Chisholm, from the William Chisholm Institute. So there's just been a whole lot of history that I have found when trying to find this family. So what we're going, what we're dealing with now is that my seller wants to sell this property, but the issue is that Mr. Chisholm's remains and his tomb is on this land. This property is zoned LC, like commercial. So we're just trying to do the right thing. And we, I have exhausted all the avenues I know of until I called Mr. Roddy. I asked for his help. The family, there's a few family members here. There's others that live out of state. They want to move the body to Lincoln Memorial Cemetery, which is over on Flint Street Extension. We went over to where Lincoln Memorial Cemetery is. There's a picture of it there. This is where Mr. Chisholm's mother and father were buried. She also was a, pretty much a hero in our town. And there's inscriptions on her tomb and on her monuments there that tell what she did for the community. So the family had, had advised me, they reached out to me, and they said they would like to move Mr. Chisholm there. Well, the city, we hit another roadblock with the city because they don't know who owns that cemetery. The Historical Lady Society from City Rock Hill, named Janice Miller, she says it appears to be abandoned. So at that point, I looked up in the property records online, and it states that People's Trust Company was the owner previously of like nine and a half acres. In 1944, they sold two acres to the Lincoln Memorial Cemetery, but nobody knows who, who owns it. So since that time, we just keep hitting all these dead ends. The family said we want to move him there, or we want to move him to Weeping Mary Cemetery, which I'm sure would be fine. But we don't even know which way to go. And I'm, I'm here on behalf of the family, myself, my seller. We've done all we can do as a citizen to reach out for help. And that, and I know this is not part of the county issue probably, but we need some help with this. The seller feels like he's not going to be able to sell his land until something is done with the remains and this tomb. The family wants to move the body, and they, and they saying to me that because of everything this man has done, they want him to be recognized by the city. They, they can speak for themselves, but I'm just telling you what they've spoke to me for, you know. Anyway, I feel like this is something that you guys should be aware of. I called Councilman Roddy. I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't know a lot of you guys, but he's in the news all the time, and he's on Facebook, and he always is helping people, and I see it, and that's why I called him. And so he said, all right, well, go ahead and get on the agenda and let us know. Put together something and tell us what the roadblocks are. The last time I heard from city was July the 1st, and I have not heard from them since then. And y'all know what today is. Today's the 19th. And this man's been laying there since 1962, and he hasn't been recognized. He got recognized again in 2014, and he got forgotten again. How many more years is it going to take before he gets recognized for all that he did for our town and our county? I'm sure this land was not in the city limit, so it was in the county when he lived here. He actually owned about 20 acres. There's three actual lots. The first one is three and a half acres I have listed. There's another lot right behind it with the pond, and I think that's where the mansion was at. That's where I found the bricks. That one there is eight and a half acres. And then the next one is almost flooded up against Russell Street, and someone else owns that. But I researched the records of Mr. Chisholm owned it all, and they were all lost in a tax sale, which is another tragedy. But I'm just asking if there's anything that the York County Council could assist with, giving him some recognition for what he has done for York County, what he has done for the city of Rock Hill, and also maybe assist this family. They, I mean, they've been, they've owned half of Rock Hill from what I understand, well, a long, long time ago, before I was ever born. You know, maybe, maybe some kind of funding could be given to help move this body. We don't even know how much it's even going to cost to do this. But that's why I'm here today, and I appreciate y'all's time.
Thank you, Ms. Gaffney.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we'll hear from Mike Moore, Assistant County Manager, to provide a parks update.
Could I make just one comment? I know this is out of the ordinary, so I'm asking.
Yeah, I prefer, we're going to have some other folks that are going to come up and speak on that particular issue and the public information.
I was just going to suggest Culture and Heritage Museum, because that's their, their records.
They're right here.
I would suggest.
Waving his hand.
Reaching out to them, so.
Thank you, Robert.
Good evening, members of council. I'm Assistant County Manager Mike Moore. Tonight, I will provide an update on several of the York County Parks projects. Currently, York County has seven parks of these, five are presently in the planning, design, or construction phase. First park I'll speak about is Allison Creek Park. It's a 161-acre site with an existing boat ramp and parking located on Lower Lake Wiley. The large graphic is a rendering of the design for the proposed park facilities at Allison Creek. The insert is the location of the site within the county. As we discussed during the council retreat, major facility and amenity improvements include primitive and RV camping, expanded day and boat trailer parking, playground, canoe and kayak launch, a trail system, park entrance, two bathhouses, and picnic area and shelters. The rezoning and lease agreements with Duke Energy have been approved by council, and bids have been received by Duke Energy. And a reimbursement agreement is currently under review by county staff. We anticipate that that will be coming before council on the agenda next month. The next park is Nanny's Mountain Historical Park. What you see is a graphic of the overall plan for the historic park based on the master plan, which was completed last year. The insert graphic is a location of the park within the county. There's three distinct areas that were developed in the master plan. The first is the trailhead or entry plan in the lower center, the iron ore mine in the center-left, and the ridge top in the center-right. The entry plan or trailhead is the first portion of the master plan staff is considering for the design phase, since the other park areas are dependent upon parking and facilities located at the park entrance. A design will include a trailhead plaza, renovated parking lot, prefab restroom, open-air picnic shelter, trail connections to existing park trails, and designs for future ranger's, ranger office, storage building, and a dumpster. Next is the iron ore mine plan. It includes trails, an open-air picnic area, a small theme playground with a seating area, kiosk with information center, and a tower deck overlooked to view Lake Wiley and Charlotte. Next is the ridge top plan, which includes trails and an activity node, which includes information center, restroom facility, an informal amphitheater, a shelter replacement, historical memorials, and an overlook. Worth Mountain is a 1,600-acre property located in western York County next to the Broad River. At present, there is no master plan for Worth Mountain that has been developed. Therefore, staff is recommending that council consider moving forward with a master plan that include a project kickoff, a final master plan, public input, opinion of probable cost, implementation and phasing plan for a presentation at council. The York, City of York Veterans Memorial Park, the county, is presented with the master plan. It's located in the city of York. While many portions of the park have been completed, there are additional improvements in the master plan that will be under consideration for construction based on additional funding that was provided this year. And finally, Riverbend Park. The county is in the master planning stages of a new park with the working title Riverbend. York County Council made a significant investment in December 2018 through the purchase of a 1,900-acre parcel that borders the Catawba River for almost five miles. Riverbend features primary forest, seasonal wetlands, ponds, enormous pines, and expansive meadow. York County has hired Greenway Planner, Designer, and Author Chuck Flink as the county's consultant for the park, who is working with landscape architect Dan Dodd through the York County Riverbend Committee. Both Chuck and Dan are guiding York County officials and leaders in creating a master plan for Riverbend. This concludes my presentation. However, I will play, as I sent to you all, a seven-minute video clip on the master plan. Thank you.
Hello, and welcome to the online public meeting presentation for the Riverbend Park Master Plan. This presentation will provide an overview of draft recommendations for a 1,900-acre parcel owned by York County located along five miles of the Catawba River. The project is currently referred to as Riverbend Park. This is a working title, and the official park name will be determined at the conclusion of the master planning process. The mission of Riverbend Park is to provide a nature-based outdoor recreation preserve connecting visitors to activities and programs that celebrate the native landscapes and ecosystems of York County. Nearly 1,700 acres of the project site have been placed under a conservation easement, protecting the land's natural state and limiting development. We will now review the proposed park components in more detail, which have been developed based on public input, feedback from the Riverbend Park Steering Committee, an assessment of environmental features, a market analysis, and the consultants' recommendations. As visitors approach Riverbend Park from the west, they will travel along Neely Store Road. The master plan recommends transforming the entry park landscape by utilizing wood fencing, stone walls, oak trees, a wildflower meadow, and wood signage to signify arrival into the park. York County will also need to work with the South Carolina Department of Transportation to upgrade the current rural roadway network to improve travel conditions and wayfinding to Riverbend Park. The master plan recommends the installation of two gatehouses and one formal park entrance. The two gatehouses will be installed to collect user fees and manage public access. The master plan recommends a 24-foot-wide paved asphalt park loop road to serve as a primary connection to many of the activities and elements within the park. The park loop road is divided into a north and south section, each with a gatehouse entry. The master plan recommends a five-mile paved pathway along the river's edge known as the Catawba River Greenway. The Greenway Trail will be 10 to 12 feet in width, and the trail tread will be surface and asphalt, concrete, boardwalk, or as a bridge, depending on environmental conditions. The master plan recommends 25 miles of nested loop trails for hiking and nature observation known as the Loblawli Hiking Trail System. The Loblawli system will take trail users throughout the entire park. It will contain a variety of surface trails, including gravel, stone dust, boardwalk, bridges, and native earth. The master plan recommends a scenic river overlook located at the top of the ridge on the Catawba River known as Heron Point. Heron Point will entail an observation platform and interpretive signage for park users to learn about the river and its ecosystems. The master plan recommends two points of public access to the Catawba River known as Crayfish to support canoeing, kayaking, and fishing. Riverbend Park will contain two river access points, one in the north central part of the park as part of the lodge activity zone, and the other in the southeast corner. The master plan recommends an area to host smaller outdoor events from intimate concerts to family picnics known as Red Oak. Red Oak will entail a series of flexible open fields to host a range of activities. The area will also entail a collection of picnic pavilions of various sizes, a nature-based playground, disc golf, and a dog park. The master plan recommends two primitive camping venues. The first known as Bard Owl East, which is located along the eastern lakes, and the second known as Bard Owl West, which is located north of the Luxury Motor Coach Park. The size and exact number of tent sites will be determined in the next phase of design work. Campers will have access to a bathhouse and food concessions. Bard Owl East will also entail 20 RV camping spots. The master plan recommends lake access and water sports known as Blue Gill. Blue Gill will consist of fishing docks, canoe and kayak rentals, and other water sport activities along the three southeastern lakes. The inland lakes of the park offer a contrasting water sport experience to the river. The master plan recommends an environmental education center known as the Salamander. The Salamander will showcase the natural and cultural history of the Riverbend Park landscape. Programs will be offered for children, teenagers, and adults. Also promoting environmental education, the park provides a unique opportunity for birding. The master plan recommends a multipurpose event center known as the Lodge. The Lodge architecture will feature a rustic national park influenced design and be a LEED and sites-certified facility. The Lodge will feature parking, exterior gardens for outdoor events, a small amphitheater, a wedding venue, a restaurant, and a beer garden. The master plan recommends an IMBA-designed mountain bike park known as Copperhead. Copperhead will entail trails for varying skill levels, bike wash areas, picnic pavilions, and a small clubhouse with restrooms. Copperhead will also include a skills course and pump track for novice and younger riders. The master plan recommends a Luxury Motor Coach Park known as the Falcon. The master plan recommends a luxury motor coach park known as the Falcon. Located on the western side of the park on non-restricted land, the Falcon will feature gated access and entry. The Falcon will entail approximately 130 parking pads along with full utilities, expansion of the existing lakes, picnic pavilions, playground, restrooms, and a service building. As a unique lodging opportunity, the Falcon will provide park visitors a place to stay for professional sporting events and other regional attractions. The master plan recommends a central operations center. The operations center will include an operations building, maintenance facilities, and ranger station for park information. This concludes the online presentation. For more information and to provide your feedback on the Riverbend Park Master Plan, please visit www.yorkcounty.gov.com. The deadline for comments is August 2nd, 2021. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate you giving the update on all of the parks and where we are in that. Just for council's information, this slideshow was performed by the consultant, and I wanted to make, it was their recommendation that the public have access to that when they're making comments. This is something that will certainly come before council, and council will have an entire opportunity to put, to weigh in. But this is, this is what Chuck Flink and Dan Dodd put together, and actually, this is something that I wanted you all to see before it went to the public. The committee is not, we all realize that we've got to make the decisions about where we move with the park. That's actually the first time I've, I've watched it. So just wanted to make sure the council is aware of where we are with that as well as the other parks. And I do, I think what we're going to start doing is having these updates from staff on, on all of the park updates when we need to do that. Thank you, Mike. At this time, we moved to public forum session. Just a reminder, when you come up to the podium when I call your name, if you will state your name and give your, give your address, and then you can proceed to talk. One thing that I hate doing, just because I'm, I'm southern and I like to be cordial, is to cut people off. But the purpose of this public forum session is to give folks an opportunity, two minutes to speak before we get to county business. We have a lot of county business to conduct. So if you'll make sure when you see the blinking lights up there, if you'll go ahead and stop so I don't have to interrupt you and be rude, that would be very much appreciated by me. I understand that the first three individuals who are on our list are actually going to come up together and do their two minutes as a group. So I will call you all together. Johnny Chisholm, William Chisholm, and the first name looks like Wally Cathcart, if you want to come forward. And again, if you'll state your, your name and give your address.
Thank you. I'm Johnny Chisholm. I live at 1082 Valley Drive in Rock Hill, South Carolina.
I am William Chisholm. I live at 516 Bridgestone Lane, Rock Hill, South Carolina.
My name is Wally Cathcart. I live at 3862 Landaleane, Rock Hill, South Carolina, 29710.
Okay, we are here, we're here to talk about William Mason Chisholm. The cousin, that's my second cousin, and this is my brother William Chisholm. It's his second cousin, too. And I met him once when I was a child about, I wasn't more than eight years old. And we think he should be recognized in the history of Rock Hill, just like the Friendship Nine and, you know, everything else is recognized for his contribution to community and everything. But the realtor, Ms. Gaffney, talked a lot about what I was going to say, discuss. So I just got a few things to say to add to it. He also provided clothing. Sometimes he'd leave and go up north and bring clothing back for poor kids, you know, addition to the buses and stuff. And I think she said something about water. He paid for the, get city water on the people on Crawford Road, which was outside city limits for the county. He paid for all that himself. And the buses he purchased, he did not get any help from the city or the state. This is all his doing himself. He also had a store on Saluda Street. He provided, you know, merchandise and food for people in the community. And on the buses that he provided, if you, you know, I think he charged something like a nickel or something, a quarter. If you could pay for it, if you couldn't, he provided the buses free. And I understand he drove one of the buses, or sometime he'd drive one of the buses. But he did a lot for the community. I think he should be recognized. Forge his grave, movement of his grave. I believe that if, it should move it to Lincoln Cemetery and maybe change the name. I think that might be possible to Chisholm Cemetery. And also, he'd be, he would be near his family if they moved it. But if, if not, if they're going to leave it where it is, I think they should put a memorial around it, or some kind of statue or something. And even if they move, put something special around it. And the city should, you know, do that for him, because of contributions he did years ago. Thank you.
Thank y'all for letting us speak about William Mason Chisholm, my second cousin. But I'm going to give, give my time to Mr. Cathcart because he's, he's an encyclopedia on William Mason, and he can tell y'all a lot more than I can. But thanks for your
First, I must, I want to say is that Mr. Chisholm was a giant of a man. I can bear witness to that because in 1950, I graduated from Carol Rosenwall School. And at that time, Carol was located where it is now, on Williamson Road and Marbury Shore Road, approximately eight miles out of Rock Hill. At that time, there was no buses for African-American children to get from the rural area to the Rock Hill School. And my mother was very determined. She said that she wanted all of her children to at least get a high school education. I don't know how she would have managed that had it not been for Mr. Willie Chisholm. The very year that I graduated from Carol Rosenwall School, 1950, was the year he put those two buses on. He routed one to Catawba and one out to the New Zion Community Center. I, along with my brother Crawford, we were in the same grade. We went to Weston School for eighth grade because the year that he put those two buses on, there were more students coming to, to Rock Hill Schools, so Emmett Scott could not handle that many students. So those students, like myself, went to Weston for eighth grade. There were two large eighth grade classes could not have been handled in Emmett Scott. Thanks to Mr. Willie Chisholm, I got a chance to go to high school because if you lived out in the rural area at that time, there were practically no cars. We didn't own an automobile, and most of my peers didn't. There were very few cars. Even if you owned automobile, you could not transport your child back and forth to school each day and work the farm. That would practically have been impossibility because we were cotton workers, farmers at that time. And no, prior to that, most of us did not go to high school because that school, that seventh grade was as far as we were going to go because there was no transportation. For two years, I rode that bus until the state put on bus during my sophomore year. That, from sophomore to my senior year, I was able to ride the, the state-owned buses. Prior to that, it was Mr. Chisholm's bus that we got to school. They were used buses, but they got us to school and back each day. I found that Mr. Chisholm did many more things. He had a store on Crawford Road that serviced the community. He even built a baseball field over there by, where their property is. And that was my great love and desire to play baseball because that's why I went to New Jersey, because I wasn't getting a chance to, I wanted to be a professional baseball player. I succeeded. And I did get to play a couple of games on the field that he built right there off of Saluda Street. He had the fence around it. I think he used slab, but I remember very clearly. He was a very articulate man. He was always immaculately dressed whenever you saw him. He was in his white shirt or tie, and he had that demeanor. He had that kind of smile, that he was always accessible. And I can never forget him as long as I live, and I pray I live today that I see, that he is properly honored and respected in the Rock Hill community because I think he is, he is a treasure. And I think his memorial would draw people to the city if they understood who he was and what he represented, and how he serviced the community and did things for African-American people in particular because at that time, during the segregated era, it was difficult. It was very difficult. And I feel honored and also duty-bound to speak up for Mr. Chisholm, and I'm happy, and I, and I'm happy. And I believe that by putting it over there, over the area where they're going with it, it will be more accessible instead of in the wooded areas behind the daycare center. So I'm happy about that. So once again, I speak very clearly and loudly for Mr. Chisholm. I will continue to do store as long as I have breath in me. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. And I would again echo what Mr. Winkler said. If you want to catch up with our staff here and get connected with the Culture and Heritage Commission and see if that's an avenue you can pursue, that's probably a good one to, to look at.
Y'all doing okay today?
Yes, sir. If you'll please state your name and your address.
My name is James Wesley Kenley III, and I was on behalf of wanting to speak, you know, the two minutes real quick. My first suggestion-
I'm sorry. If you could please give your address.
My address?
State your address, yes.
My address?
Yes, sir.
Where, where I live?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My address is 786 Grant Lane, Clover, South Carolina, 29710.
Thank you.
All right. What about my phone number?
Don't need that.
Okay. All right. My suggestion I would like to speak about is the road. I know y'all do penny for progress on our roads here in York County. We're lows going all the way to Papa Dock and going all the way into Charlotte. More and more people are, you know, the population is getting bigger. And my suggestion is that if we have our lights and take them down and turn them into roundabouts, you know, at the big junction areas, that might create a steadier flow, you know, with our traffic. It's just a suggestion, you know, maybe in upcoming future, just to put like roundabouts instead of having lights. And now, in the middle of the roundabout, that can be like if it was a bad wreck or whatever, in the bigger roundabout areas, that can have like a tow hitch standing in the middle. That way they can pull a car or a truck for the firefighters or something, you know, they can pull it out of the way for the tow people to come and get the vehicles, you know what I mean? So that's just one idea I got. The next idea is that I believe that panhandling should be legal in the state of South Carolina. We got too, too many people that, you know, I believe that, you know, that's going to jail, you know, even for panhandling, you know, should be, you know, legal for, because it could be you in the situation, you know. Now, if they was aggressive panhandling, yeah, then you can go to jail. If somebody then tops it and they prove it on a video with an officer, you know, they can go to jail for that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Kenley.
Arrested panhound and go to jail.
Mr. Kenley, thank you. I gave you some extra time since it took a while to get the address out of there, but we appreciate your comments. Thank you.
The two minutes is up?
It's up.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
It was my favorite talking again. I hope I can come back again and speak. And I am, you know, really sorry for the last, you know, that was not really me. And, but I just like to really talk about good things.
Thank you, sir.
And I hope y'all have a wonderful blessed day today.
You, too. Thank you. We move on to consent agenda. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve consent agenda.
Okay. What are the items?
Item number five and item number 23.
Yeah.
Five is the nominations that the Board of Commissioners, and 23 is related to names
We will move number five to, as number two, under new business, and number 23 as number three, a new business. Do we have a motion to approve consent agenda as amended?
Well, I'd also like to go ahead and remove number 24 out of consent also.
So that will be number four under new business. Again, it only takes one council member to move something out of consent. So number four under, new business will be what is currently number 24 under consent. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second and any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda passes unanimously. We move to public hearings. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 21-09, tax map number 511000013 zoning request to rezone from AGC to RUD. This is five acres within District 5. Mr. Bueno.
Evening, counsel. This request, 21-09, is to rezone a five acre parcel from AGC to RUD. As you can see on the aerial there, this is a property that already has two existing homes on it. The intent of the applicant is to subdivide it into two parcels so that the homes could be under separate ownership. So in order to do that, they would need to rezone to RUD to get under the five acre minimum for AGC. Staff recommends approval of this item as does the planning commission. It's also a recommended condition of approval that, that the property be subdivided such that there is one home on each lot, and that be done within 90 days, just to be sure that it complies with RUD zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? If you want to come forward and state your name and address.
Antonio Wade, 1423 Auto 3 Court. Basically, what we're trying to do here is just give the lady who worked for, she's the secretary at Wade's Trucking and Utility. She's been living there forever. So we're just trying to give it to her. That's all we're trying to do is just give it to her.
Thank you, sir.
But we need to get it rezoned in order to accomplish that.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close. Second.
Motion is second to close public hearing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
And this motion to approve is subject to the conditions as listed.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Public hearing to rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading, case number 21-10, tax map number 738000044. Zoning request to rezone from RD2 to BD1, .5 acres located within District 5. Mr. Bueno.
Yeah, so this application, the property owner currently has a therapy center, and so this is a split zone parcel. So here in red, that's the existing therapy center. And the property owner very recently purchased an additional parcel of land and combined that. So this is actually a split zone. So currently, you've got one portion of the parcel of the zone BD3 for the existing therapy center, and the other portion of the property is zone RD2. And their intention is to create an additional parking lot for that existing therapy center to accommodate their additional parking needs. Staff recommends Staff recommends approval of this item as does the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? If you want to, that now's your time. This is the only public hearing?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion is second to close public hearing, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. And we moved, we have no old business. We need to move to new business. Counsel to ratify a three month contract extension regarding bid number 2548 for HVAC support services for York County facilities with Johnson Controls of Charlotte, North Carolina for a total cost of $53,136.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Now we move to number five under consent agenda. Approved nominated applicants for service of boards of commissions from the Finance and Operations Committee meeting on June 21, 2021. It's Stewart, York County Culture and Heritage Commission, District 2, Sherri Barton, Contaminal Health Board, Chelsea Paget, York County Library Board at Large, Talia White, York County Library Board at Large, Jennifer Scott, York County Library Board at Large, Flint Holbrook, Stormwater Appeals Board, Andrew Jones, Board of Disabilities and Special Needs, District 1, and Debbie Cloninger, York County Planning Commission at Large.
So I just, I pulled this out and would just want to make a motion to approve it as is with the exception of the three York County Library Board members. Would like to have a little more conversation about that at the next Finance and Operations Committee meeting. We just review that again. We've got another seat that's come open in addition to some concerns that have come up regarding that board.
So is the motion to approve as written with the exception of the library physicians?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. By default, the other three will kick back to Finance and Operations Committee. Now we move to number 23 under consent agenda.
There was also number, was it four or five you say as well?
Oh, that was, the library was number five. So 23 was the other one.
Oh, that's right. Okay.
23 counts to approve amendment number one with Stewart Engineering of Charlotte, North Carolina for $91,400 plus approximately 10% contingency for a total of 100. What is that?
$10,000.
Is that supposed to be 10,000? I can't do my math right now. It's got the wrong-
It's a total of 100,000, so.
So there's a missing zero. 100,000 to prepare construction plans for Phase 1 Trailhead area for Nanny's Mountain.
So on this one, I wanted to just defer this. We've got several other things going on in that district. This happens to fall in the new preservation park district. And we're wanting to be consistent with what we do there. So, and we're not in a big rush. So we would just like a little more time to look at that plan and consider that plan and what our oversight is going to be that may be needed out in front of some of the other things that we're doing in that district.
So is the motion to defer to a specific meeting?
How long do you think we need for that?
Well, I'm not sure how long it's going to take to accomplish, but why don't, can we say just indefinitely? Or do we need to put it? Why don't we say 90 days?
Okay. So to defer for 90 days?
Motion to defer for 90 days, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move to number 24 under consent. Counsel to approve the execution of a contract with John R. McAdams Company, Inc. of Charlotte, North Carolina for $50,370 plus 10% contingency for a total of $55,407 to prepare a master plan for Worth Mountain.
Yeah, so the reason I wanted to get this out of consent is I've got a couple of quick questions in regards to this. Can you explain on-call vendor in regards to this?
Sure. We periodically, our procurement department goes through an on-call process for things that, like engineering services, architectural services, other type of services that are professional in nature. So we go through a process where we do an RFQ for qualifications from these firms during a set period of time. And we select those based on criteria that we put in the request. And what's, we've had an opportunity to review all the proposals. We select a number of firms that we feel like meet our standards or best meet our standards and then create a pool of those engineers or professionals that we can select from to perform various projects for us. Typically, they're smaller in nature, not always, sometimes they do exceed our procurement amount and we bring those back to council, but it saves us the time of going to an RFP or RFQ for that particular project. So it gives us a menu of contractors, a menu of professionals that we can choose from in order to perform those services.
So the vendor that was chosen for this was on that list then, and then from a cost standpoint, how does that fall in line with our normal cost of what we'd spend to have something like this done?
Right. They're kind of like pre-qualified to do work for us. And those types of services are typically not done based on bids. They're done on qualifications and then we negotiate with the winning, the most qualified firm. Same process under the on-call specialties is that we would select a contractor or a professional and then negotiate a price based on the project. And that is the same way, the same process we'd go through if we did an individual RFQ for a specific project.
Okay. So from a pricing standpoint, we identify that upfront as a qualifier on top of-
Right. We, in this case, we selected the engineer for the project, discussed the scope, and then negotiated the fee, just as we would had they been selected based on an individual RFQ.
Okay. Last question. Worth Mountain is also a WMA property though. And also, wouldn't it be considered-
It's managed by Department of Natural Resources for us.
Yeah. So, okay. So how does that fit into us going and doing work out there if it's, how do they tie in? Where's, how does the dynamics work?
I think that's the type of thing you would work out during a master planning process is to differentiate what they may do. I mean, I don't know if we would take some segment of that and not have it managed by them and have it turned into a county park. I think we would answer that question during the master planning process.
Okay. Okay. All right.
I have one question. Do we have local companies within York County that are already pre-qualified?
I'm sure there are. You know, I haven't looked at the list in a while. We qualify more than one company in each of these disciplines. So we have a number we could select from based on how we think they qualify for those particular projects.
We've had a number of questions, but we don't have a motion on the floor. So if we could get a motion on the floor.
I make the motion to approve the contract, the execution of the contract with John R. McAdams Company.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion?
I'd like to say a few things.
Mr. Winkler.
Couple of things. One, I do think that you're right with that as far as the way I understand it. We own the property, but we've contracted DNR to manage because there are dove fields out there that are hunted and there's fishing and that type of thing. And so, but that's only a small part of the 1,635 acres that are out there. So there's a lot of opportunity for other stuff to be done. And since we're talking about the cost of it and stuff, I was just wondering, and I don't remember, approximately what did we pay for the master plan for Riverbend?
Just trying to do that from memory, I think it was about $85,000. And that did include some branding and some market studies. Some of those market studies we're actually going to use for this as well. So we think it's applicable to this project. So it is a little bit of a discount here for, and it's about the same number of acreage. I would say the planning would probably be a little less intense on this property. So that's why we negotiated the fee to what you see there.
I was thinking this was a little less than what we paid in Riverbend, or quite a bit less actually, but.
Yeah, I think the, without the branding, it was 85,000. And I think that the branding may have been another 20 or so. So all total over $100,000 for the Riverbend.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Committee and other reports, Chairman Robert Winkler for FNO.
Thank you. FNO met this afternoon, or this evening, I guess it would be, at 5:30. And we considered applications for service from the Bethel Lake Wiley Land Acquisition and Preservation Parks District Board. And we recommended the appointment of Angie Clinton for a first term to the vacant spot there. On the York County Culture and Heritage Commission, we recommended the reappointment of Penny Shepherd for a second term in District 1. And on the Keep York County Beautiful Board, we rescinded a recommendation we made at the last meeting for moving Stephen Ballinger to the vacant at-large seat because we had a hiccup in our process and Mr. Ballinger did not move out of the district. And so we just rescinded changing him. Mr. Edwards, who is the District 3, John Edwards, District 3 appointee, has moved out of District 3. So we made the motion to appoint him to the vacant at-large seat. And that'll leave District 3 looking for another person to serve in District 3's spot. Then we also discussed the allocation of some funds from District 3's council-directed funds to Sharon Fire Department for driveway apron repair, I guess you'd call it, at their, beside the Sharon Fire Department. And we had a discussion of the ordinance amendment for the York County Convention and Visitors Bureau. And this was just a very initial preliminary discussion because as a council, we said that since we have changed the funding for the CVB, that we should look at the ordinance and that type of thing. So we had a little bit of information from county manager and he is planning on meeting with the CVB directors, the city of Rock Hill and others, and come back to us probably sometime next month, I believe was the timeline, with a couple of options for their recommendations on how we should proceed from there.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. Council member knew non-agenda comments?
I don't have anything to add. Take them aside.
Any others? Does anyone know?
No.
Okay. I do want to let counsel know that Whites Huckabee, who was the former chair of the ad hoc committee that was created by Brett Blackwell, reached out to counsel and requested an opportunity to present information about the Agriturism Committee that he formerly chaired. To my knowledge, they have not met since, for a couple of years, formally met for a couple of years. And he still has some information that he would like to share with the group that, I'm going to refer that to the Health and Human Services Committee, which is the committee that oversees the parks for them to, so that we can streamline that. You can hear his request and you can present something back to counsel.
Yeah, we've actually scheduled, there is a meeting scheduled.
Okay.
Yes.
Very good. Citizen concerns, Sunny McCrory to address counsel regarding the Encourage and Serve Club America and the world.
I'm Sunny McCrory and my actual name is Baxter McCrory. And I started a program that is intended to change America to a better America. I recall when I was young that my parents stayed at home. And when they started to work, I stayed in the church. And in God I trust is what I've always been for. And my program is primarily to bring back some of the good values that we used to have and maybe add more goodness than wrong that's happening all over our country. And I'm not going to say anything wrong. I made that mistake one time by mentioning everything that was wrong. So I don't want to say anything that's wrong about anybody or anything like that. The Encourage and Serve Club has to do with values. It has to do with telling the truth. It has to do with ethics and virtues. These things are all important. But the most important part of this program that we need, we need it not only to support families, but to support the churches and support the fairness in our communities. If we had everybody telling the truth, then we would not have the problems that we have right now. If everybody was for each other, we wouldn't be saying things wrong about anybody. We need to have witnesses of truth, not of lies about people to tear them down. And people do that. And they ruin people's lives. And they run children's lives, grown people's lives, people that are in trouble. We have let drugs and things like that consume our whole society. And we've got a pack of liars. But you know what? Coming out of this pandemic, everybody needs to come out with a different feeling. We should look at what we, I was thinking of all the nice things, all the parks and things that you were talking about, that you were adding. They're terrific, but if their heart is down and they are not able to cope with life and they commit suicide, and a lot of people are doing that. A lot of people are beginning to be involved in criminal activity. The number of crime leaders or gangs have, in some areas, doubled all the police. The police department is supposed to be the most unique, powerful, good-for-good that there is in the world. And we need to think of it that way. We should honor our police. We should show respect for them. And you know something? We all can have a little bit more respect if we treat everybody as we would ourselves, as the Bible says. And the primarily thing that I'm going to talk about tonight is only the most important thing that is above all things other than the Bible and good works. That's the family. We have totally destroyed values that were most important. And I know it was in my youth. And, you know, sure, there was some wrong in my time too. But you know, everybody thought, because people tried to do the right thing, everybody thought we had a pretty good society, especially in the 50s. In the 60s, drugs sort of started taking over. 70s, it went haywack. It began going around all over. And it was brought in and it went from one side of our country to another. It killed millions of our children. And what are we doing about it? What are we doing to make life better? We're not doing a heck of a lot. We're not, we haven't improved what we started to try to make, number one, life safe. Your home's supposed to be your safest place. You know something? It's not. Matter of fact, our society in some ways is not safe. Now, I'm not saying there's not good people. Now, I'm not saying there's not good people. There are a lot of good people. A lot of people have turned bad because of their difficult situation. They're doing things that they normally wouldn't do. But, you know, we have to treat and teach respect for each other and if we respect each other, we don't have the problems that we have now. I didn't come here to talk about this program for my benefit, it has nothing to do with me. It has to do with America that I know that I'm for and every one of you should be for America above anything else you're doing and, and right above that. And your faith is important. Truth is important. If you don't believe that truth is important, have somebody lie about you and see how it hits you and how it affects you, how, what it does to you. It can tear you apart. You can begin looking at all the wrong when things like that are going on. If somebody says that you're going to be safe in your home and the parents are gone away, well, they're not safe. Not only that, they don't know what's happening to their children. And I honestly believe this. I know women are all, are, I love women. I love, I've always, I've had a good wife, very good wife. I was married 36 years. Of course she died. We never had an argument. You might not believe that, but we didn't. We respected each other. But the family is something that we have got to start putting above everything else, not beneath it. Having all these nice things can create fun, that's good. I'm for that. Matter of fact, part of my program has to do with dancing. It's good to dance. I do dancing myself and I came up, I was born in 1939, so I've been around a little while, probably a little bit longer than most of you. I've seen the good and I've seen the bad. I've seen good in all races. I've seen evil in all races. So we're, we're supposed to not point fingers, we're supposed to point help and that's what I'm trying to encourage people to do. Ethics, making good decisions is important and that has to do with values too, but, and also virtues is when you do something, not because you have to do it, but you want to have kindness. You want to share your goodness with other people and help them. And that's what my program is about. Serving is not supposed to be for welfare. Serving is supposed to be if a person is sick, they need to have help. If they have, if they have, have to have help that is needed, where they don't have help, then you provide it. But the most important thing is this. During the 50s, the women were taken from being a mother to being someone that had a job and left their children at home or had them in the hands of someone else. Shouldn't be. There's no reason for it. Matter of fact, the government spends so much money on everything else, why don't they pay a woman to stay at home and teach her children values and truths and justice? And the American way, you ever heard of it? The American way? You know, there's a lot of truth in it, but there's been a lot of wrong that's gotten by in the past years. So I came here primarily to let you know that the family, you serve your family first above all things. Of course, in doing that, you serve God first, but you also serve your country. I was in the Navy. I was in Navy during Sexes, during the Cuba crisis. I put my time in, but it's not something for me to say it to get the chairs to thank you. It's primarily to say that I have enough respect that I want to help my country. When I was coming up, I used to preach on the corner when I was about 13 years of age and at that time, nobody else did it. It was unusual. It was sort of weird, somewhat younger doing that, but I did do that. And I was brought up in the church all my life. Am I perfect? No. Tell me anybody that is perfect. We're in the making of better or we're, we're not doing right. You know, there's one thing about wrong, it's always wrong. It's not in between. Some people say, what is truth? Well, it's according to what you say it is, think it is. The truth is the truth, you can't change it. No direction, up, down, or in between. Facts that are truth are the truth. And we've got a lot of hurt in this country and what I would like to see is everybody get out from staying in and staying out with good people. Use values to choose good people to be around. You know something? If you get around someone that is bad and your children look up to them, they're going to try to act like them if they think that it's better. You've got to make your family the best place in town, the best place around. You know, it's time to put the past over them.
Thank you, Mr. McCrory. Mr. McCrory, it's been 12 minutes, Mr. McCrory? I'm right here.
Excuse me?
It's, I'm right here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead, I can't hear you.
It, it's been 12 minutes. If you could, if you could get to a point of maybe wrapping up, we'd appreciate that.
Excuse me, I still didn't hear you. Hey, I'm 81, so talk a little bit louder.
We appreciate you being here tonight. If you could please wrap up the meeting, we still have executive session.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
You guys have a nice evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do. Moved that we move into executive session regarding a contractual matter relating to Project Lama, another contractual matter regarding consideration of retaining Gary Pope as bond counsel for Bethel Lake Wiley Parks and Preservation District, as well as the receipt of legal advice regarding our opioid litigation, as well as the receipt of legal advice regarding a request for settlement authority for county engineering project number 16245, tracks 135, 137, and 138.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion?
There's one more project on the number one is Lama and Project Yodel.
Okay, sorry, and Project Yodel.
Motion amended and accepted.
Yes.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move to executive session in the back. Session, no action was taken. Do we have any motions?
Oh, we have some motions. There's several and I'm bound to mess up one of these, I'm sure. First motion, motion to authorize negotiation with Nation Ford Land Trust to perfect and finalize the acquisition of Project Lama.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our second motion is to approve the expenditure of $39,200 to cover survey appraisal, legal fees, and land trust stewardship costs for Project Lama.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our third motion is to authorize acquisition for Project Yodel.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Motion number four is to approve Pope Flynn as bond counsel for the Bethel Lake Wiley Land Acquisition and Parks District.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our next motion is to authorize our county attorney to endorse a potential opioid litigation approach as we discussed in executive session.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
And I believe our final motion is to authorize settlement of condemnation actions relating to county engineering project number 16245, tracks 135, 137, and 138.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.